So let's go ahead and begin. And it's, my name is Rich Hart. I'm a department chair at the Ohio State University in biomedical engineering and also have the great honor of serving as president of BMES this year and next. And this is a terrific session on, co-sponsored or sponsored by the National Science Foundation, so a BMES NSF special session on research and grant writing. And Thanasis Sambanis, who is at NSF, will be giving some welcoming remarks in a moment. But this is the third such session that we've had at BMES. It's been a true partnership with NSF and BMES. And we very much look forward to these opportunities to hear about experiences and also have some networking. In fact, there'll be a short reception in the middle of the discussion a little bit later that is sponsored by the University of California at Irvine, so I wanted to thank them for their generous support of refreshments that we're going to be able to offer at the reception. So without much further ado, let me just go ahead and introduce Thanasis, who's going to talk about the actual program and do the introductions.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Rich. So I'm Thanasis Sambanis, and on behalf of NSF and me personally, welcome to this BMES NSF special session on research in biomedical engineering and grant writing. We are very pleased with this partnership with our professional society, the Biomedical Engineering Society, and having this opportunity to highlight research supported by the National Science Foundation in the biomedical engineering area, and also interact with you and have an opportunity to try to provide some guidelines, some tutoring if you wish, on how to try to prepare winning proposals with the National Science Foundation. Because that would not only help you, but also it would help the field, the biomedical engineering field, advance in a more effective and meaningful way. As Rich mentioned, this is becoming an ongoing event. I'm very pleased to say that the first joint BMESNSF session was held when Kai Ming Yi, who was program director for the biomedical engineering program at NSF. And so Kai Ming, thank you for your leadership in this regard. And so this session has become a little bit more expanded, and now it includes presentations not only by career awardees, but also by an unsolicited proposal awardee. And we're hoping that this partnership and this special session will continue into the As part of my introductions, I'm also supposed to make a few announcements. The first is, please make sure you fill out the evaluation forms, which are going to be electronic. Secondly, please make sure you pick up your memory stick, which you're going to find on your seat, or if there is not one on your seat, then you can see the person at the end of the, the projectionist at the end of their, at the back of the room for one. Also, the session is being recorded and will be made available to all attendees through the BMES website. And last but not least, I'd like also to let you know that I will be rotating out of my position at NSF. It is a temporary position, so I will be rotating out at the end of October. And this position announcement that is being vacated, and another one that is being vacated in our division, are being advertised. So qualified individuals, please consider applying for these two openings. So in this session, we're going to continue with research presentations by NSF grantees. I think we have an outstanding lineup of NSF grantees who are going to highlight aspects of their research funded by NSF. Then we're going to continue with a networking reception in the back of the room. And after the reception, I'm going to offer a brief tutorial on essential elements to develop a successful NSF grant proposal, especially for the BME program, or more generally the bioengineering and engineering healthcare cluster in our division. All these terms will become a little bit clearer to you when I show you the organizational structure of NSF. And following this tutorial, we're going to have an interactive grant writing and grant submission panel discussion, in which we're going to have a very good representation from all department chairs, NSF reviewers, previous NSF program directors, and NSF grantees, who are going to entertain questions from the audience about things to try to do to strengthen your proposal and to avoid, in order to again strengthen the proposal that you submit. Without further ado then, let me proceed with the first of the four presentations from grantees that we're going to have today. Three of them are career awardees, and one is an unsolicited proposal awardee. The three career awardees were selected to be a recent awardee, a mid-career awardee, and an awardee who has had the career grant for a few years. So the career award is approaching its end now. So the first presenter is Bahare Beacom. She's the early career awardee, and I'm very pleased to introduce her. She is from Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University, and she's going to talk on a biom manufactured platform for modulating immune cell bacteria interactions in the tumor microenvironment. Before Bahare begins her presentation, let me also remind you that we're going to have all the questions to the presenters at the end of this session. Not after each presentation, but at the end of all four presentations. So please make note, write down your questions so that you do not forget them, and ask them at the end of the presentations. Bahare.
I would like to thank Thanasis and the organizers for this session, for including me and giving me the opportunity to share with you some of the work that we have been doing at Virginia Tech, and also the process of developing the outreach and research component of my career proposal. Okay. So I'm at Virginia Tech. As Thanasis mentioned, I direct the micron-based laboratory at Virginia Tech, where our interest is in utilizing experimental and theoretical approaches to study phenomena at the interface between biological systems and synthetic systems at the micro and nano scale. The main research trust areas are in biological-metamuciloidic, bacterial adhesion and biofilm formation, and also bacteria-based drug delivery systems for cancer therapy. This is the research area that I'm going to focus on today and the topic of my career award. As I'm sure many of you know, chemotherapy is the most common form of therapy for all stages and types of cancer. We have made great progress in this area over the years, but there are significant challenges remaining that limits the success of this form of therapy. Specifically, there are genetic and epigenetic-related resistances to standard molecular therapy. Furthermore, there is low selectivity and systemic toxicity associated with this method. Another lesser perhaps appreciated limitation is microenvironment-mediated drug resistance. But as you see in the figure shown, tumors are poorly vascularized, as shown in blue, and that further limits the profusion of drugs shown in pink within the tumor environment. So in pretty much all the field of drug delivery, but particularly in cancer, the main challenge remains the steering of therapeutic to target tissue, such that we can achieve maximal therapeutic efficacy with minimal toxic side effects. Now, if you think about what system would have the proper attributes for achieving this challenge, or for resolving this challenge, pathogens come to mind because they are very effective in evading the immune system and targeting certain tissues in the body and infecting those tissue. So sure enough, bacterial infection has been looked into for cancer therapy. In interest of time, I cannot give you all the interesting stories about it, but talk to me during the reception. There was an accidental discovery in late 1800s, and since then, there has been significant research in engineering bacteria for cancer therapy. What we currently know is that bacteria, engineered bacteria can evade immune system fairly successfully. They can specifically target the disease site. Many of them can target metastatic cancer. Interestingly, they can kill cancer cells that are not responsive to standard molecular therapy, and they can also reach this poorly vascularized region within the tumor. So a lot of research in this area, both in the U.S. and internationally, the current state of the field is that there is no bacterium that can fully treat tumors solely by its presence in immunocompetent hosts. So many people are using different methods to try to address this challenge. Our approach has been developing a multimodal therapy, in which what we have done is to take the strength in nanomedicine nanoparticle-based drug delivery, combine that with the targeting and penetration strength of bacteria, and develop these nanobait systems or nanobacteria-enabled drug delivery systems that are basically able to target and penetrate inside the tumor. Prior to my career award, we had done some work in developing these systems through controlled self-assembly techniques, and characterizing their performance, their transport performance, and also used methods in synthetic biology, specifically quorum sensing-based or population, population-density-dependent activation of certain functionality within bacteria, such that we can impart them with certain properties that they do not naturally have. We use both experimental and computational method. In interest of time, I'm not going to go into detail, but if you are interested, we have a poster in the afternoon that you can visit. So at this point, when I was preparing for my career submission, I start thinking about what is a good question that utilizes our expertise, our preliminary results, the results we have already obtained in this area. It is of significant interest to the community and of transformative nature. So to answer that question for myself, I went back and looked at this body of literature, and I noticed that the significant problem or breakdown in efficacy of bacteria-based therapy seems to have to do with immunocompetency of the host. And sure enough, there was some work available that showed if you can systemically deplete the immune response in the host, you can achieve significantly improved therapy. So this schematic shows how the immune cell restricts the location of the bacteria and don't allow them to fully colonize the tumor. Of course, you cannot deplete the immune system in a host and then present bacteria if you are thinking translational application of your research. So we hypothesized that localized modulation of neutrophil-bacteria interaction within the microenvironment may assist in overcoming the immunological barrier to proliferation of bacteria within the tumor. And we proposed to biom manufacture a system that would allow us to study the interaction between bacteria and tumor, and then work on modulating those interactions. As Thanasis mentioned, this is a recently awarded grant, so we are just setting up the basic pieces to start collecting data. But the goals of this project is to develop a system very similar to the nanobait system that you saw, that would allow us to locally introduce leukotoxins and understand how the bacteria and neutrophil interactions will change with, in presence of the leukotoxins. We are also constructing a library of mutant bacteria to see how we can have the more desirable interactions between the bacteria and neutrophils within the tumor microenvironment. And lastly, we are developing an on-chip tumor model that incorporates immune cells. I believe that's the first of its kind. The current tumor models do not include immune cells. And we think that using these approaches and achieving these aims, we can significantly contribute to the current knowledge in bacteria-based therapy. A lot of what we will be developing hopefully will find use in cancer immunotherapy. As you probably know, that was the breakthrough science of the year in 2013. So it would be good to have on-chip models that would allow many researchers interested in this area to pursue this in vitro as well. And also, about 15% of all cancers are caused by bacteria and viruses. So some of our findings could be beneficial in that area as well. With regard to outreach, just very briefly, if I may give you an advice, pick something that you are passionate about, and pick something that your university has the infrastructure to support you, something that is part of your institution mission, and of course also of interest to NSF. My personal interest that fit well with the university mission and NSF mission was assisting underrepresented people, both in terms of ethnicity and also socioeconomic background. Assisting participation of those individuals in engineering. We decided to target middle-school age children because that seems to be the age where disparity in interest in the STEM arises between boys and girls. And we have two different approaches, one developing a web-based module, so that we can have a broader impact at the national level, and the other is training teachers as opposed to training students directly, hopefully so that we can develop better training modules, and also again, reach out to more individuals, to more students. For undergraduate research opportunity, I decided to reach out to community college students. You may know that 50% of undergraduates with a bachelor degree in engineering at some point attended a community college. They normally do not have access to undergraduate research, and they are normally from underrepresented or low-income backgrounds. So providing this opportunity hopefully get them interested in research and graduate school from early on. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge my students. These are the newer students that haven't made it in our group photo yet. The list of names that you see here are the current and former students that contributed to the project that was supported by CAREER, and the collaborators again that are on the project that was part of the CAREER award. And of course, our funding sources, particularly NSF, for giving us the opportunity to work on what I think is going to be a very exciting and impactful project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Bahare, for the excellent presentation. Next presentation is by Dr. Lauren Black from Tufts University, who is going to talk to us on biophysical control of cardiac differentiation in patient-specific cardiac stem cells.
Okay. Well, I want to first start off by obviously thanking the NSF for putting together this wonderful panel and session. What I'm going to talk to you about today is my career award, which is, as Thanasis said, based on trying to understand how biophysical stimulation plays a role in cardiac differentiation in a subset of patient-specific cardiac stem cells. I'm currently at Tufts University. I've actually been there five years now, and this award was actually awarded in the spring of 2014, so I've had it for a little over a year. So I'll show you sort of where we are in the progress of things, but I wanted to start off actually by just broadly talking sort of what my lab's research, research focus is. And so my lab is primarily interested in understanding mechanotransductive processes within the heart. So how cardiac cells, both in health and disease, integrate the sort of mechanically-based signals into sort of cell function, and then of course, cell fate and phenotype. And so the main thing that we study is actually cardiac extracellular matrix. This is a nice image that I wish I could take credit for that was done by me, but it's actually a collaboration with Irene Jorgakoudi in our department at Tufts University, doing two photon excited fluorescence and second harmonic generation imaging of the extracellular matrix. And it's just designed to show you that, you know, we have this sort of multi-scale hierarchical structure of all these proteins that form this sort of support structure, what's previously thought of as a support structure, to cells, but now we know is a very strong signaling component to it as well. And so what we try to do is use a variety of these sort of tools, including, as I said, multi-photon microscopy, mass spec-based proteomics, and then doing things like profusion desaturization of both healthy and in this case, diseased or infarcted hearts, to try to understand how this compositional and structural and mechanical changes that occur in these processes actually lead to changes in cell fate. And of course, you're not meant to read all this, but this is sort of what ends up happening downstream. So we're very much interested in that sort of molecular biology readout that's happening within the cells. Primarily, when we're talking about this, we're really primarily focusing on integrin-based signaling, and it's the signals that, the sensors that cells use to sense the ECM. So taking a little bit more of a 30,000-foot view, the lab really has sort of three core areas, I would call it, where we do a lot of work in what I'll call matrix biology, although by no means would I say I'm truly a matrix biologist. I think if I went to ASMB and said that, I would probably be shot. But as an aerospace engineer undergrad, but we also work, do a lot of work in mechanobiology, and then also in tissue engineering or regenerative medicine. And there are a number of projects ongoing in the lab that sort of span these areas, both individually within one of these groupings, but also sort of the overlap between the two. So what I'll talk to you about today more specifically is the work that's been funded under this CAREER award. And I really just kind of laid out what the sort of snapshot and what the intellectual merit and the broader impacts were designed to be for, for this work. And so really, the goal in terms of the scientific portion of what we were doing was really to assess how substrate properties, which included composition of the extracellular matrix and the stiffness of the extracellular matrix, along with bioelectric signaling, play a role in the differentiation of these patient-specific CK-positive cardiac progenitor cells. And this is a human-based system, so we actually derive these cells from tissue biopsies, from pediatric patients, human pediatric patients undergoing repair of congenital defects of the heart. And then in terms of the broader impacts, this, you know, similar, I think, to Bahare, my interest is also in sort of educating younger people and really trying to get them into the lab so that they get that experience. So I'll talk a little bit towards the end here about sort of what, what our program is, but it's really geared towards offering high school students an opportunity to come into a college-level lab and do some research over the summer. So just as a little bit of background before I get into some of the data that we've been able to show, congenital heart defects are basically, is a broad term that basically describes structural malformations of the heart that occur during fetal development or embryonic development. Oftentimes, they occur when the heart is undergoing this very large transformation from a singular tube, what we call the linear heart tube, to the four-chambered organ that we know today. And that's done by a very complex process of folding and sculpting that goes on within the tissue. And it's during this kind of process that we can have sort of irregularities that occur that lead to defects in sort of the structure of the heart that could be overt holes, like holes in the septum, or the malformation of a particular chamber. Now, the general causes of these things are sort of wide and varied. There's definitely some cases where genetics plays a role, and in fact, probably many more that we don't know about, just because those particular genetic etiology hasn't been discovered. But we also know things that are more mechanical in nature, like alterations in the blood flow through the heart during development, and also external mechanical pressure onto the organ during this very crucial process can lead to these same sorts of defects. So congenital heart defects, they are the leading cause of death in infants and young children. They account for about 1% of all live births. That's the broad spectrum of CHDs, which includes everything from very severe ones to relatively minor ones. The most severe ones, like tetralogy of Fallot and hypoplastic left heart syndrome, where we have either significant holes within the structure of the heart, like within the septums, or, you know, a loss of one of the chambers, in this case, the left ventricle because of the fact that it never grew appropriately, often require two to three surgeries within the first two years of life. And that treatment program has been around for decades. There really hasn't been much change, and it is primarily palliative in nature. It's really designed to bridge these children to transplant. Hopefully, by the time that they're in their early twenties at the latest, more likely by the time that they're in their teens. So this is sort of what the structure of this heart would look like after one of these repairs. This is a hypoplastic, hypoplastic left heart patient that's undergone this, and what you can see here is that now this person, this child would have a univentricular heart, so it's one ventricle pumping the blood to both sides of the circulation, left and right. And oftentimes, in the case of HLHS, this is the right ventricle. So those who know cardiac physiology, and if you don't, I'll give you a little bit of a primer, the right ventricle is not used to pumping pressures that the systemic circulation requires. And so what that basically means is that this right ventricle in the children who have this condition ended up becoming very overworked, often leading to a very early onset of heart failure. And so one of the newer strategies that's sort of been, starting to be potentially hypothesized that we could try, is sort of a cell-based therapy, similar to what we do in MI patients and adults, injecting stem cells of some type into the organ to try to augment the muscle, doing the same thing here to try to improve their right ventricular function and prolong the time that these children have before they require the transplant. And the cell source that is, one of the more recent ones, that's in the sort of clinical stage, are these CK-positive cardiac progenitor cells. These cells are really nice because they're autologous, they're derived from a biopsy of the patient's heart, so they're, they're patient-specific. They have tri-lineage potential, it's been demonstrated that it can be differentiated to endothelial, smooth muscle, and cardiomyocyte lineages. And they're currently undergoing clinical trials actually for, in phase two now, for adults with MI, so treating patients with MI, and they show some very positive results thus far. The problem is that they have a really low differentiation efficiency, and, you know, on the order of approximately 1%. And this is really because much of the work that's been done thus far is really aimed at sort of chemically derived factors to differentiate these cells, or as you can see here, sort of the classic embryo body, in this case, they call it the cardio sphere method, where they generate these sort of structures that lead to differentiation. And so as I said, the role of, the goal of our work was really to try to understand the role that the biophysical environment is playing in promoting a particular cell phenotype in these CPCs. And that could be an endothelial cell, smooth muscle cell, or cardiomyocyte, where sort of agnostic in trying to generate any particular cell. So thus far, in the time that we've had the award, we've been able to generate cell lines from five different patients. They cover a range of years, from newborn, which would be 24 hours old, up to 16 years of age. They have a variety of different conditions, and what this allows us to do then is also to begin to study how, how age, sex, and the type of CHD may play a role in this process as well. And so once we get these cells, we can culture them in passage and monitor their expression of variety of levels of these sort of different cell lineages. They generally stay very stem-like, expressing lots of CK. We see pretty robust expression of early cardiac markers and endothelial markers, but very little smooth muscle and hematopoietic markers. And then what we've done to try to get at this sort of biophysical aspect of this is we've created a hybrid hydrogel system, where we're taking natural cardiac extracellular matrix that's derived from the normal tissue and incorporating that into a fibrin hydrogel. And the reason really is because when we started to look at this and try to use natural extracellular matrix by itself, we had a lot of difficulty being able to control the stiffness. And that was a really important factor for us because we know from previous measurements by, by our lab that, you know, we really are looking for a fairly decent range of stiffness, anywhere from five to 30 kilopascals, which is what mimics the sort of normal ranges of development in the heart. And so by kind of combining this system of fibrin and ECM, we can, by using a transglutaminase as a cross linker, we can actually generate gels that have stiffnesses that match that range. And of course, by changing the ECM that we add to the mixture, we can also control the compositional aspects of it. And so, you know, when we say we're controlling composition, what we're really trying to understand is whether the composition that's present in normal development actually is playing an important role in this process. And so we've actually started this process of looking at fetal, neonatal, and adult hearts, so I'm showing you cellularized and desaturized tissue here. We can do mass spec on this tissue, mass spec-based proteomics, and see that there are very broad changes in sort of the overall ratio of proteins within these structures. And then when we take this back into the system and look at how it affects the CPCs, when we put cells in these neonatal-derived extracellular matrix gels, we can see that stiffness really isn't playing much of a factor. But when we switch that to an adult-like gel, where we have a little bit more of a mature extracellular matrix, we can see now that we are able to tune this von Willebrand's factor expressions, the endothelial differentiation of these cells in a stiffness-dependent manner. And of course, the nice part about this is by having this kind of fine control over of composition and stiffness, we can also start to begin to develop these very vascularized structures within these gels. So I just want to finish up a little bit by talking about the sort of broader impacts of the work that I'm doing. As I mentioned, a part of this grant is really aimed towards improving this summer high school research program that I founded. The way it works is we have students that come from local high schools, they spend six to eight weeks in one of the labs of the faculty in the department, working on a project, and at the end of the summer have a poster session. They also get exposed to other, other research topics through seminars, they visit a company, and they have an option for continuing this project for state science fairs. And we've actually been very successful in that regard in the last couple of years. So Erica Budina is, this young woman who's standing here, actually worked in my lab for part of this summer program and was the winner of the top award at the 2014 Mass State Science Fair for her project. She was also the second author on the paper that was published on this data that I'm showing you now, as a high school student. Unfortunately, I couldn't convince her to come to Tufts. Harvard came a calling, and she decided that that was probably her place, so we lost out there. But anyways, just to summarize, I've hopefully shown you here that we can isolate these CK-positive CPCs from pediatric patients. We're able to really generate robust vascularization with these cells, although cardiac differentiation remains elusive. And we're continuing to expand this high school research program, particularly into areas of higher need, where we're shooting now for high schools where they don't really have the strong facilities that some of the high schools that are closer to Tufts may have, and the access to labs at Tufts that the closer high schools have. So we're trying to expand this to high schools where we might be able to get those kids who, who just don't get this opportunity. And I would quickly just finish up with a couple of tips, since this is part of this, and we can, I can fill in on these more frequently, but I would say, definitely utilize your program officer, and this is even in the pre-award phase, they're there as a resource, they're very helpful, particularly in the context of programmatic relevance, and whether your work, whether what your idea is fits with their program. I would talk to previous awardees, like you're doing today, which I think is extremely helpful and something I did when I was applying. And I think the broader impact section is really important, and, you know, I think I would echo Bahare's, that you have to really find something that you're passionate about, that you care about, and that you have the resources to do. And it should be something that's creative. I think the more creative it is, the stronger that looks in front of the review committee. So I just want to also finish up by thanking my So I just want to also finish up by thanking my lab, and these are the members here, of course, the funding, particularly from the National Science Foundation, and thank you guys for your attention.
Thank you, Lauren, for the excellent presentation. Our third presentation is by a more senior CAREER awardee, Dr. Marnie Saunders, from the University of Akron, who is going to talk to us on a biomimetic micro-total analysis system platform of bone remodeling elucidating the role of cell communication.
Okay. I also would like to start off by thanking the organizers and for giving me the opportunity to present to you. I have to be very honest, when somebody asks me to give a formal presentation, I usually try to find an excuse to get out of it. But in this situation, this CAREER Award has been very, very important to me, and it's been the most probably critical award and the most important part in moving my career forward. So I really wanted to come and give the opportunity to talk to you and let you just know how important winning one of these grants can be. So I'm going to talk a little bit about my research, but mostly I kind of want to just talk about it in very general terms, and talk more about some of the tips and suggestions, and looking back on this, what this opportunity has afforded. So it is kind of a technical title, but basically what we're looking at is can we model bone remodeling in a Petri dish? Can we take this kind of lab-on-a-chip technology, these microfluidic systems, and can we make a model of bone remodeling that we can really study in a lab? And that's what our work was focused upon. I'm going to start with the most important slide. I've never accomplished anything in a vacuum, so there have been a lot of people, and a lot of undergraduate students and former graduate students aren't even on this list, this is a lot of current people, that I owe a great deal of thanks to for their support, and some of the funding mechanisms prior to the CAREER grant, but also after the CAREER grant, and I'll touch upon that later. So this is generally what we want to make, and this is kind of a cartoon illustration of this, but again, we want to miniaturize this concept of bone remodeling, bring in the multicellular interactions, and start to study how all these cells interact to allow bone to remodel, maybe in response to damage, maybe in response to microgravity, but in some kind of altered load or a drug, how they interact to alter the bone volume. And so this is actually kind of a planform view of our chip, this is a PDMS chip, we have osteocytes in this well that we stained for activity, these are osteoblasts in this well that are on a polystyrene substrate that has been stained for bone formation, bone nodule formation, and these were osteoclasts on a bone wafer that have been stained for resorption after the cells have been removed. And so what this is, is it's a cartoon of putting these cells, right now, the three main cell types in bone remodeling, our osteocytes, our osteoclasts, and our osteoblasts, in these separate compartments on this chip. We have these microfluidic chambers, and we can, for instance, stimulate these osteocytes, and we can subject them to different levels of damage. We can collect that conditioned medium, and we can then apply it to osteoclasts and osteoblasts, and we can quantify the effects. So what we're trying to do is kind of separate these things out and understand how the multicellular interactions, the cell communication, the soluble signaling, and the direct cell contact come into play in orchestrating this response. One of the things about this system is that it's flexible. So again, depending on what we want to study, we can modify this platform. So for instance, in this situation, we're looking at an example where the osteocytes are stimulated, we collect that soluble signal from them under the different types of load, damage, unloading, et cetera. We add them to the osteocytes that are on that native bone matrix, we collect that conditioned medium. So when they respond, what do they give off into their surroundings? And then we add that to our osteoblasts, and then after about a month of culture, we can quantify these effects. In this case, now we're looking at different aspects, and so we're putting them in co-culture. So now, instead of just allowing them to be compartmentalized and look at the soluble signals, now we're starting to add, well, what happens when we have the direct cell interactions? And so again, we can stimulate the osteocytes, collect the conditioned medium, and quantify the effects in co-culture. What's their net activity? Is bone going to be made, or is bone going to be resorbed? The whole point to this is that in a lot of the mechanobiology field in bone right now, we take cells, we put them on an artificial matrix, we put an artificial stimulus on them, we say, this marker went up, and that's indicative of. So clearly, that has to translate clinically. And so what my lab is interested in is trying to make models that are more relevant and more biomimetically accurate to really simulate what's going on. And so in this case, then, we can knock out communication, topically, our gap junctions, and then we can also include the role of communication in this model. Here, we're kind of looking at paradigms. So the question is, when osteocytes are damaged, are they the cells that communicate to the osteoclasts and the osteoblasts to coordinate the repair, or is it the normal osteocytes that aren't seeing the stimulus? So again, by separating them out, we can apply a damage signal here, we can take that conditioned media, whatever it is that they're giving off into their environment, and we can add it to osteocytes that do not see the damage. And then we can monitor that response, and by using these all systems as controls, we can start to tweeze out these multicellular interactions. I'm not going to really show you a lot of data, there's been a lot of work here, but some of the things that we've looked at is we showed that the osteocytes function normally on PDMS. This was the first anybody had done a lot with bone and PDMS and microfluidic, surprisingly. So we had to lay a lot of groundwork, we had to show in our hands that we could have the bone cells that make the bone accurately form the bone, the osteoblasts, the osteoclasts that resorb bone, we had to be able to show that they could resorb the bone on our native matrix, and that we could quantify all those assays. We built the loading platforms to subject our osteocytes to different levels of stimulation, and we mechanically did a whole complement of characterization of these systems. Then we actually built the lab on a chip platforms, we did this through a lot of solid works modeling, finite element analysis, we wanted to load these substrates, so we had to verify that they would hold up to the mechanics of the loading, so we did a lot of mechanical characterization. And then we started to quantify the effects of that conditioned medium from those different damaged cells on the effect of the other cells, the osteoclasts and the osteoblasts, and their ability to form or resorb bone. And then again, we could block communication, and now we're starting, in that slide before, we're starting to kind of look at some of these different interactions. And then we also were able to quantify a bunch of cytokines, about 40 of them, that seem to be involved in this process, and we're relating them to remodeling, apoptosis, et cetera. So what could we do with this? If we're successful with this, and we'd like to think we're getting very close to being successful with this, oh, this system puts all the cells under the same exact environmental conditions. So one of the things that we'd like to do is put this into space, like the International Space Station, all these cells will see that same microgravity environment, and then again, in ground-based experiments, we can tweeze these out with these Synthicon bioreactors, these rotating wall vessels. This could be used to study investigational new drugs. So if a drug is going to have someone's unintended side effect on the bone, we would like to be able to quantify that functional outcome. I would like to look at particulate debris, et cetera, with implants. There's a lot of application and interest in my lab, osteoporosis, cancer metastasis, applying these models in that way. And then we're also starting to develop mathematical models of this, because what we don't want to do is run a whole series of experiments and then say, well, under these ideal conditions and these exact things, this is what happened, and that's as good as we can determine. We'd like to be able to make models that accurately reflect this, that then have extrapolative potential. So we're working with this idea of these individual-based or these agent-based mathematical models, which are showing some promise, and this is some of our early models showing bone. And then ultimately, we'd like to be able to reduce maybe the use of animal models in the research, because this platform can accurately give us the information that we need. Yes, that's a ways off, but we're making progress towards that goal. So what I wanted to talk about more is what the CAREER Award did for me, tenure. That's kind of, it's just kind of a guarantee, this is a really good grant to get you that tenure. It then led the way to my R15 that came afterwards, we're area-eligible. We have a couple of patents in the works on this, we've had about nine publications and book chapters so far, we have several in review, the final stages, you won't see much on the chip here today, because we actually have that now in our intellectual property office for some patent issues. So that will be presented next year. We've had about 21 presentations on getting to this process, nine student awards, we were featured in the North American Journal of International Innovation last summer, and it's given us the preliminary data that we just submitted on a joint NIH-NSF Math Biological Interface Grant, and then the CASIS Grant, which is trying to get this on the International Space Station. Some of the things that might not seem as obvious, it was breathing room. You have a grant, you can kind of ease up a little bit and look at some of the other things you want to accomplish. So earlier this year, after about three and a half years of working on it, I published a book on mechanical testing, which is more my classical training. We have been invited to guest edit a book on biomimicry and biomedical engineering. It's offered a lot of new collaborations, a lot of opportunities to serve on grant panels and to network, and it's helped junior faculty at my own institution with their awards, as well as to provide students with quality research projects. A couple of suggestions for you, wholeheartedly, I believe these things, as long as you're eligible, keep trying for this grant, okay? It's easy to get frustrated, but kind of pick yourself up, dust yourself off, and try again. Keep trying, this is a very, very important award. Take to heart the reviewer's comments, they're working with you, and they're really trying to help you get to something that's transformative. Thinking transformative is, I think, probably the most important thing, and so what I like to do is, at the end of five years, I try to ask myself, what will I have? How can I use it? And can others use it? So I think good research should ask more questions than it answers, essentially. And explain this to others, don't assume it's obvious, don't assume that you're so smart, all the reviewers are going to read this, and they're just really going to get everything you're talking about. I know a lot of junior faculty that get very upset that the reviewer doesn't appreciate the importance of their work, because they need to explain to the reviewer why it is so important. So don't overlook that, and this is where you have to brag a little. Finally, I think you need to avoid research that just fills a knowledge. So again, just because it hasn't been done doesn't mean it's a good idea. And at the end of five years, after this award, if you look around and say, now what am I going to do? I think you've missed the mark on being transformative. Don't overlook the broader impacts, I'm not going to talk about those, but mine also were on middle school children, I focused on younger kids. Develop some new activities, but also remember to use the network at your institution, okay? And take advantage of the existing systems and the existing structure that's there as you try to develop your own. They don't want activities that are going to take a ton away from your research efforts. Finally, have an assessment plan for your outreach, start early, and be very critical of your work, okay? Don't assume just because you wrote the grant, everybody's going to be equally impressed. I think I had about 25 revisions, major criticisms on mine, before I actually put that one in. So you have to be really, really critical of what it is that you're turning in, in your own ideas. And basically, good luck, because like I said, I think it's a very important grant, and keep trying, because it will make a big difference in your career, it certainly has in mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Marnie. Thank you, Marnie, for the excellent talk and for the very helpful hints. The fourth presentation today is by Dr. Hanjun Kong from the University of Illinois at Rubana-Champaign. Dr. Kong is an awardee of an unsolicited proposal, and the title of his presentation today will be "Interrogating Adhering Matrix Rigidity-Dependent Neural Differentiation and Neuromuscular Junction Formation of Multipotent Stem Cells."
Thank you for the kind introduction, and also thank you for giving me a chance to introduce our work, which is supported by this generous unsolicited award from the NSF, PMS program. And in order to explain how we developed this project, I may have actually briefly introduced my CAREER Award, which was actually terminated in 2014, and then how could actually generate the new award. So basically, I'm in the Chemical and Biomolecular Engineering Department, and also I'm affiliated with the bioengineering of the UIUC. And in general, actually, our group's interest is in the development of the new advanced biomaterial systems that can enhance the quality of the diagnosis and treatment of the vascular disease. And also, these biomaterial systems include the nano-micro particles and a variety of the hydrogel systems. And also, using these biomaterial systems, we are very interested in understanding and also regulating integrated cell systems, so we can ultimately develop functional organoids that can be used to better understand the emergent behavior of the cells, and also use that as advanced drug screening platforms. And also, we actually hope to develop advanced functional tissue, so we can contribute to advance and enhance the quality of the tissue regeneration therapies. Basically, what we have been actually interested in particular was to understand and also engineer the properties of the extracellular matrix used for the 3D cell culture, which is similar to the in vivo environment, and especially, we have been actually studying the effects of the matrix stiffness, permeability, and cell adhesion ligands, actually in a 3D matrix. So for this study, however, what we often encounter, actually, for the 3D cell culture, is the very complex dependence between the material properties. So for example, if we want to understand the effects of the matrix stiffness on the cells in a 3D matrix, we have to change the elastic modulus of the hydrogel typically used for 3D culture, but in this case, we typically kind of encounter the decrease of the swelling ratio, which represents the permeability, whenever we increase the elastic modulus of the cell. So therefore, there is a clear undesirable inverse dependence between two properties, therefore, it's very difficult for us to define individual and combined effects of the matrix properties, especially for the cells in a 3D matrix. So therefore, actually, what we proposed as for the CAREER Award was to develop a biomaterial enabling decoupled control of the stiffness and swelling ratio, and due to the limited time, I cannot fully explain the fabrication method of the hydrogel, but we could actually successfully demonstrate the increase of the elastic modulus still minimally changed the swelling ratio at the high levels. So using this material system, we also developed the material that can encapsulate the cells in a rigid 3D hydrogel matrix, and also support the secretion activities of the cells, especially for the proangiogenic factor. And also, coupled with the 3D printer, we actually kind of controlled the release direction of the cell secreting factor, so we can generate the new vasculature, which exactly follows the circular pattern introduced in these hydrogel systems. In addition to that, we discovered that the cancer cells cultured in the soft matrix behaves more like malignant cancer cells compared with the cells in the stiff matrix, which is very different from the past studies. And throughout these actual studies, what we actually often encountered was that these actually effects of the matrix properties on the cell is often dependent on the number of cells cultured in the 3D matrix, which implicates the important role of the cell-cell adhesion, as well as the cell-matrix interactions. So therefore, actually, kind of what actually we now actually started to actually have an interest in was that how these actually cell-cell communication is actually mitigating the signals from the matrix and also soluble factors. So basically, in the past, there have been some efforts to understand the effects of the cell-cell adhesion by culturing cells in a form of the spheroid or sheet. But with this actually system, it's not easy to control the type and number of the cell-cell adhesions on the molecular scale, so therefore, actually, what we were interested is that whether we can kind of engineer the cell surface with the cell adhesion protein, so we can use this hydrogel part as a neighboring model cell systems. So therefore, in order to pursue this idea, we teamed up with Professor Deborah Lekman, who's in our department too, and she's the expert of the biophysics of the catechin, and also she can synthesize several catechin molecules using a recombinant technique. And basically, we tried to immobilize these molecules on our hydrogel system, so we can culture actually cells on top of this hydrogel, and finally, control the neural differentiation and also organoid formations. So therefore, actually, we proposed this idea to the biomedical program in 2013, and actually, we proposed an idea to analyze the differential effects of the catechin molecules on the cell differentiation as a specific aim one, and then in a specific aim two, we wanted to study the combined effects of the catechin and matrix stiffness, and finally, we wanted to evaluate the differentiated neurons from the stem cells, whether it can actually form the functional neurovascular junctions as a kind of a form of the organoid. And we actually fortunately got an award in 2014, and we are now actually implementing the studies to pursue each aim studies. So from now on, I can actually highlight some of the progress we made since last year. So basically, for the first study, to make a hydrogel immobilized with the catechin molecules, basically, we are synthesizing the catechin molecules tagged with the FC molecules, because that we do not want to chemically conjugate these molecules directly to the hydrogel. In that case, we found that the chemical conjugation blocks the cell binding domain, so we cannot actually kind of achieve the proper cell addition to the hydrogel. So therefore, we actually synthesized the F tag, the catechin molecule, and separately, we made a polymer chemically conjugated with the FC antibody, and then made the hydrogel systems. And then we simply incubated this hydrogel chemically conjugated with the FC antibody, together with the F tagged N catechin molecule, so they can specifically bind only on the surface part. So with this hydrogel, we found that the cells actually responded to the N catechin immobilized on the hydrogel, so we could see that the extent of the cell spreading tends to increase with the catechin density. And also, more interestingly, we found that this hydrogel immobilized with the catechin mole- molecule supports the adhesion of the green color neuron the cells instead actually the clear cell adhesion is going to be prohibited. But in contrast, the polylysine substrate typically used for the neuron cell culture supports the adhesion of the both two cell types together so that can make a big difference using this hydrogel system. So we are currently exploring that whether there is a better method to immobilize this catechin molecule to complete this aim one study. But at the same time, we actually are examining whether this mechanical stiffness can also orchestrate this cell adhesion and neural differentiation. And what we found was that the stem cells cultured on the hydrogel with an elastic modulus of about 10 kilopascal, similar to the muscle tissue promotes the neural differentiation much actually more significantly than the cells cultured on the much softer hydrogel systems. And also, we actually could see that this cell keeps growing up and then develops a kind of 3D neurospires, which actually was examined using the light sheet microscope. And also, we are now actually using this, the neurospires to introduce the neuromuscular junction, which is an innovation of the neurons into the muscle tissue, which is the aim three study. And I hope to actually show that the kind of this neurospire can actually stimulate the contraction of the muscle, but this computer doesn't seem to support my movies so I cannot show that interesting movie. But instead, we actually, throughout the immunology chemistry, we found that this green colored neuron, it innovates this muscle, and then you can see that the white spots, which is the marker of the estinoline receptor, so we could actually confirm that there is a neuromuscular junction formation so they can stimulate the muscular contractions. In addition to that, what we are also pursuing is that we actually hope to, we are actually working to incorporate our research module into the several educational models for the broad impacts. So this is a kind of a continuation of the education program I developed throughout the career award. Basically, like we are incorporating this study as a module of the biotransport course I developed in 2009, and it's actually being taught for the chemical engineers. And also, I'm using actually the hydrogel design for the program, which is an outreach program hosted by our university. So that's for the high school female students, which is offered every summer, especially like we are using this program for the awards who's interested in the chemical engineering, but they are very interested in learning actually neuromuscular junction and also cell adhesion part. In addition to that, we actually are active to train the undergraduate and graduate students together with the dissemination of the project throughout the publication and presentations. And finally, I would like to thank all my collaborators in our campus and outside of campus, and I would like to thank the funding source, especially to the NSF. And also, I would like to wish that the Dr. Sanvanis' best love with the next position. And also, I would like to thank all my actually group members who's actually graduated and working in the university and also other companies, and also I would like to thank my current members. Thank you for hearing my talk to the end. This is, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The floor is now open for questions to the presenters, so please approach the microphone and ask your question. If you direct your question to a particular presenter, please identify whom you are directing So while you're collecting your thoughts, maybe I can get started. So, oh, there it is.
Very nice work. It seems to me that most of you with your career award did something with middle or high school students. In the state of Pennsylvania, they've recently passed a law that requires background checks for working with middle school or even high school students, not just for the people working directly, but if they're in your lab, everyone that might be coming in contact with them. And so I want to hear about what you guys might think about states that are passing these laws and how as people applying for career awards, we might be able to, you know, work around this or find a solution to be able to still work with those kind of young students even though it's more challenging. Thank you.
Well, so I can start with at least regards to high school students in Massachusetts. We also have laws, but they're more strictly around the age that somebody can actually participate in a chemical or biologically based research setting. So all of the students in our program have to be 16 years of age just for safety regulations. So I'm not sure if the, you know, that plays a relevant role in the context if, you know, once they reach a certain age in high school, you then don't need the background checks. But the other thing I think one could do is you could really become, base it more around sort of more like a curriculum development or actually working, for example, I think Barre had something about working with teachers, you know, so actually, you know, bringing in teachers from middle schools and elementary schools and helping them develop programs that might be, you know, incorporating some of the work that you're doing into, you know, a module in the class that, you know, that gives the kids a sort of a different way of looking at science, for example.
I can also speak a little bit to that. Some of my broader impacts and outreach activities were to physically go to the schools. And so I did most of it myself, and then so I did some of those checks and some of those clearances. And it was actually kind of just more practicality because I would rather do that. I was afraid of the liability. So I didn't like the fact of kids, middle school, grade school kids being bust up, you know, long distances. I worked with very rural Kentucky students when I first started this project. So I actually went to them and did most of it on my own, and that bypassed a lot of the issues.
By the way, NSF also, it's fairly easy to apply for a, what we call an REU or an RET supplement if you have a career or another grant. REU supplement is to support an undergraduate, usually for the summer period. RET is to support a teacher, also for the summer period, to come to your lab and learn a few things, which then can be transplanted to the high school that the teacher is working at. And it's fairly straightforward to get these supplements out of your, you know, parent grant.
Hi, Derek Clear from Fort Bend Coast University. I was wondering if you could each talk briefly on how well established you were at your universities before you got the career grants?
So I was just talking to Tanasis about this. I was there for a good four years. I had attempted one submission in an entirely different program. My background was more on the systems biology side and developing intelligent machines at the small scale and using biological systems as biomotors. So it took me a while to sort of apply that to the biomedical area. So I was a few years along. I hope that helps. I think one issue is developing your own transformative idea and having something that distinctly separates you from the areas of research in your, the labs that you were trained in.
Yeah, and I was probably very similar in the time. So I just was awarded April 2014, so I was in Tufts about three and a half to four years at that point. And I'd also applied once before to the same program, but actually had a gap. I applied actually quite early and then had a gap of a couple of years where I really wanted to, you know, in sort of Marnie's word, take the reviewers' comments to heart and really try to address some of the significant issues that they had with the original submission. But yeah, around, I was around four years as well.
I don't really appreciate you asking this because now I have to say I'm old. And so I actually spent about five and a half years at Penn State working in a clinical research department. I did biomechanics with orthopedic surgeons. And so when I then moved to Kentucky, that's actually when I started to pursue the career grant. And so I was actually about five years into, it was not tenure track all of those, but I was about five years into the career before I actually started to pursue the project.
Then, I had another quick follow-up, which may be more appropriate for the actual people who have worked with the funding agencies, is that I heard there's a move to restrict the awards of some of these grants, maybe not this grant specifically, to only tenure granting institutions or to only faculty who are on tenure tracks. And at my university, they actually don't offer tenure to any faculty. So can you speak to that a little bit?
This is probably your question for Tanasis.
Yeah, this is, perhaps we can discuss more about this during the tutorial because there I have a slide on the eligibility requirements for the career award.
I'm willing to table that discussion if you'd like.
Let's table the question.
Thank you.
Thank you all, first of all, for giving, sharing your insights and putting together this workshop. It's very insightful. I think my question is probably directed at the program for the program director, but feel free to chime in if you all have any insights into the question I'm about to ask. You mentioned about the REU supplement to support some of the grants, the career awards. Do you have any insight into applying for an REU in particular as the primary funding source?
I mean, that's not my area of expertise. I've been working with providing supplements to awardees, but I'm aware of the program that you're talking about, and perhaps we can discuss about this offline because right now it's not that the, you know, I'm not, my knowledge is not fresh about it.
Okay.
Please, yeah. Alex Leonessa is also a program director at NSF.
Yes, there you go. So if you want to apply for an REU entirely, not as a supplement, as a grant, the best way to proceed is with what is called the REU site, which is provided under the EEC Division, which is Engineering and Education Center. So as a site, what you propose actually is to have your own institution, usually it's done over the summer, advertise the availability for REU fellowships, and then you recruit students from around the country, around the US to come and spend the summer with you doing research in labs across a new university. So usually, it's a bigger effort involving several professors, and it's a little bit of a bigger grant. The supplement is actually a lot easier once you have a grant already, of course, which is where the difficult part is. But otherwise, if you want to focus on REUs as, you know, your venue fund and the REU site is how you would go by.
Thank you.
Hugh Lee from Purdue University. Thank you again for your insight on getting the career grants. I just wanted to ask what the best practice is to reach out to program manager in terms of getting feedback before you actually apply? Like how often, how far before you should, you know, try to reach out to the program managers and what kind of content you should provide for them to get any kind of positive feedback or constructive feedback?
Again, we can talk more about this during the tutorial and the Q and A session that follows, but briefly, different program directors operate differently. The way that I prefer to operate would be for the prospective applicant to send me a one-page outline in which they highlight the overall hypothesis, if there is one, and objective their project. The specific aims, very clearly articulated, that's important, to have the specific aims as close to the final ones that you propose, that you will propose as possible. Briefly, methods, the intellectual merit and broader impact of your proposal, again, up to one page long. Send it to me by email. Give me two or three days to review it, and then follow up with a phone discussion. And then, at the minimum, I will let you know how well aligned your proposal would be to the program. And then, we can have a more in-depth discussion about, for example, the balance of life science and engineering. If I see that life science component might be very weak, I'm going to tell you so, that it needs to be strengthened and be more balanced with the engineering part of your application, for example, and better integrated. And then, you can take these recommendations and decide whether you're going to submit in this cycle or perhaps wait a cycle and submit next year.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if the winners could mention just a little bit about what they thought distinguished the idea that they decided to submit for a career award as opposed to an unsolicited award or some other funding mechanism? What really made that particular idea stick out for that award mechanism?
That's a difficult one.
Let me just say, let me just preamble their answers by saying that the career award is not just a research award, it's a career development award. So over that course of five years, with the support that the awardee is going to get, which now is of the order of half a million, including indirect, the project that they're going to propose should establish them as a prominent researcher and educator in their field. For the unsolicited proposal, that is a research-focused application. It also needs to have a broader impact component, but it is not a career development award. It is a research award that they are going to get.
I think in my case, quite frankly, when I went to the University of Kentucky, that's what they expected. They expected you to apply for careers. That was just the process. When I was at Penn State and I had just kind of started the tenure track process, it was the Whittaker Grant. The Whittaker Grant is no longer available, and so then the push when I went to Kentucky was everybody needed to apply for the career grants. But I think the important thing, and this might be my perception, but in comparison to a lot of the other programs, certainly the NIH, but I think also in other NSF grants, the career grant, I think they take a little leap of faith with you. So, you know, we put a lot of work down and a lot of the preliminary data and our ideas and our thoughts that it never would have gotten funded by the NIH because they would have said, you haven't really shown that you can do this. And I think the career grants, like I said, they take a little leap of faith, and if this works, she's got something. If not, you know, well, you know, we thought she had a chance, so we'll give it to her. But I think they really do kind of invest in the person more and give you a little bit more leeway and latitude in having all your ducks in a row as far as the research and showing that you're going to have a very smooth transition and getting everything done. You know, we certainly had some bumps in the way, and when we wrote the grant, we made it very clear we were going to have some bumps in the way, but we were going to do everything we could to deal with it, and they gave us a break, quite frankly.
Yeah, and I might just echo actually with, a little bit more with Tanasis said, which is that, you know, having reviewed unsolicited proposals, it is really truly more about the science. So in the broader impact section, you can have somebody who really writes something quite short that's, you know, I'm going to use this for educational purposes, I'm going to train graduate and undergraduates, there's sort of a boilerplate one that people will kind of toss in there. And many times, that's okay in that case, but I think what distinguishes the career is that the broader impact section really has to be much stronger and more tightly integrated with that research component because it's really, as Tanasis said, the goal is really not just, it is a research and education, you know, where they want you to become a strong leader in both research and education. So I think that that's one of the key distinguishing features.
Okay, let's take one more question.
So I know that NIH has a little bit of a program like this, and I wondered if NSF was interested in putting a program in where very junior faculty would have an opportunity to sit on review panels, not as an actual scorer, but as an opportunity for them to see kind of what goes on behind the scenes and understand what do people look at when they review a proposal so that they could have a chance to sort of broaden their idea of how to write a better proposal?
That's an excellent point. And so, career proposals are generally reviewed by more senior faculty, not only, but more senior reviewers. But we try to encourage junior faculty to participate in the reviews of unsolicited proposals. Additionally, my division at NSF, CEBET, has generated what is called a mock review panel in which program directors act, one of them as a program director, and the rest as reviewers, as panelists, to review a proposal. And so, this, while preserving the confidentiality of the review process, because it is a mock panel, it is not a real panel, it does highlight everything that goes on behind the scenes. And that mock review panel is available online. And Michelle, I think, if not having done this already, she's going to make the link or the whole video available to the or the whole video available to the community.
And I might just add to that. I mean, I, so I think one of the things that was extremely helpful to me as I started to really revise my career award after the first submission was right around that time I also started reviewing unsolicited proposals for the NSF. I actually reviewed for a different program, not the BME program, but it was very helpful in the sense to see what exactly the reviewers were looking for from the science, how they wanted it described, how they wanted it formatted. All those things are really important, and it does give you a good sense of sort of what's going on behind the scenes. Even if you're not sitting in on a career panel, you do get that experience. I was probably maybe a little over two years into my position, so it was fairly junior, but was, you know, still very useful.
And if I had actually one more information, like when I came to the University of Illinois, actually, we had an orientation, and one of the programs was the mock NSF review program. Basically, like the faculty who have been to the NSF review session participated in the review, actually, together with the starting faculty member. So we could have a better idea about how to write, kind of to get the funding. It may not be as perfect as the onsite NSF REU mock review session, but it could really give us a good idea about how to start with for the career proposal. So maybe actually, if you're interested, maybe your university already has those type of orientation programs hosted by some teaching academies.
One more round of applause to our awardees for their excellent presentations today.